Glendale City Council and Glendale Housing Authority, may we have roll call for council?
Council members, Agajanian.
Present.
Divine.
Here.
Garpadian. Najarian.
Here.
Ersanian.
Here. May we have roll call for Housing Authority?
Authority members, Divine.
Here.
Garpadian. Najarian.
Here.
Brazian. Sannian.
Here.
And Chair Agajanian.
Present.
What's next on the agenda, please?
Agenda for the July twenty-four, twenty-eighteen joint public meeting of the City Council and Housing Authority was postponed Friday, July twentieth, twenty-eighteen, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. The item before you is Director of Community Development regarding update on housing legislative platform related to affordable housing strategy. One A is the City Council motion to receive and file report and to provide staff direction as deemed necessary. B is Housing Authority motion to receive and file report and to provide staff direction as deemed necessary.
Thank you, Ms. Beers.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Housing, Agajanian, members of the Housing Authority. As Peter Zovak, our Assistant Department Head for Community Development, makes his way up to the podium. I will just make a few remarks, and that is in twenty-seventeen, the Housing Authority, as well as the City Council, have implemented a strategy. A housing strategy, affordable housing strategy, in December of twenty-seventeen. And at that time, you also asked staff to go and think about other means of ideas, any means that we have in our toolkit that can be utilized. Whether on a local level, a state level, or the federal government, and to be able to work with those entities to bring something forward to the City Council. The staff has gone and done some due diligence and a lot of brainstorm, brainstorming sessions, and are before you today to provide you with some options that you may consider in terms of moving forward for our housing strategy with that, Peter Zovak.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, Mr. Chair, members of the Authority. Good afternoon. As Ms. Beers had indicated, this is, today's report to you is called the Legislative Platform Update, and it's related to the Affordable Housing Strategy that was adopted by the City Council and the Housing Authority in December of twenty-seventeen. That adoption came after about a year and a half of a series of meetings and reports to you about the affordable housing efforts the Authority has had in the past, City of Glendale, as well as it's been happening on the state level with regards to affordable housing. So after that series of meetings, the Housing Authority and City Council adopted this strategy with the intent that the strategy would contain specific action items to promote the development of more affordable housing across all segments of the community. I think it's important to note, it says more affordable housing. The Housing Authority has been producing affordable housing since nineteen-seventy-eight. Quite a bit of a long time, as we've heard in those reports in twenty-sixteen and twenty-seventeen. A large number of units and a large investment of money has been made by the City of Glendale into affordable housing projects that would be affordable for terms of fifty-five years or more. And so that commitment has always been there. The question has been what more could be done to promote more housing, given what's been going on across the state? If you recall, that strategy was, contained three broad affordable housing categories. They're interrelated, it's a multipronged approach. When they're all working together, it makes the most effective use of trying to develop affordable housing. Those three specific categories are identifying dedicated revenue for affordable housing. It's creating a legislative platform for affordable housing purposes. And what could be done with the utilization of land tools to promote affordable housing? Within each of those categories, there was a series of strategies that were adopted. And at the time of the adoption, we made specific points that these strategies will require policy directions in general terms. And at future dates, some of the policy strategies will require some specific directions as they're created. It'd require follow-up analysis, and we'd be coming back to you with recommendations on some implementation of them. If you recall, there were three, as we said, there were three specific categories. Category one was the Legislative Platform, and that's the purpose of today's meeting, to update you and provide you some information on the Legislative Platform category of the strategy. But as a reminder, there were two other categories, dedicated revenue, and real briefly, an update on these efforts here. Under dedicated revenue, we had Strategy two point one, that dealt with two state measures, SB two and SB three. If you recall, SB two was a real estate escrow tax that was going to generate affordable housing statewide, or housing dollars statewide, that the state would then dole out to communities. And SB three was a four billion dollar housing bond that qualified and was placed on this upcoming November election. The work on that is ongoing. Under Strategy two point two, there was desire to look at establishing a development, possibly establishing a development impact fee for affordable housing. That work has been done by the Housing Authority's economic consultant, and that report is coming back to the Housing Authority and City Council next month, August twenty-eighteen, for the results of that. There was also two point three, a strategy of looking at an in-lu fee for affordable housing as it relates to inclusionary, possible inclusionary zoning ordinance. That has been tied together with Strategy two point one, and was studied as well by the consultant, and that will also be coming back in August of twenty-eighteen. And then, Strategy two point four was to continue to look at existing funding, or committing existing funding that we have to new housing projects. And as you know, staff has been out there looking for our next affordable housing project or projects. We've had a couple of closed sessions where we've had some discussions and a couple of leads that we are pursuing on that. So that continues to be ongoing. Our category three point O was land use tools, and what can be done with land use tools to promote affordable housing? Three point one was the inclusionary zoning ordinance previously mentioned. And again, that comes back as a package to the Housing Authority and City Council in August for some input. South Glendale Community Plan is Strategy three point two. That is coming back later this month, before the City Council, for some, for presentation and input. And then Strategy three point three was the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. That's completed, that ordinance was adopted in January of twenty-eighteen. So there has been some accomplishments with regards to the strategy taking place. There is ongoing work that will shortly come before the City Council and the Housing Authority in the next month, in two months. And then there's some long-term work, and that's what we want to talk about today, the long-term work, going back to this category of Legislative Platform. Under the Legislative Platform, there were four strategies, right to lease ordinance. If you recall, the right to lease ordinance, staff did, well, let me do this, let me go through all the strategies first. Right to lease ordinance, one point two was Section Eight protections, looking at lobbying federal officials for continued and increased funding in the Section Eight program. One point three was new revenue for affordable housing. And one point four was legislative lobbying. With regards to the right to lease ordinance, that was proposed in an effort to try to provide tenants some stability in this volatile rental market and minimize displacement caused by significant rental rent increases. The proposal mandated that landlords offer tenants a one-year lease agreement along with an option year for a second year in which the initial lease year and the option year rent was defined. So ideally, tenants had a two-year window of knowledge of what their rent could be. City staff conducted community outreach with major stakeholders and presented the findings to the City Council and the Housing Authority at a joint meeting in March of twenty-eighteen. There was significant opposition to the proposed ordinance by both Glendale landlords and renters. And the decision at that time was to table the item, the right to lease ordinance. So that's, the work's been done, and it's been tabled for now. In terms of the strategy for Section Eight protection, again, that was, the strategy was to continue to place a heavy emphasis on the importance and value of the Section Eight Rental Assistance Program here in Glendale. Do what we can to lobby the federal government for increased funding and more opportunities under the program. Some of the actions that have happened, after a very difficult twenty-eighteen federal budget negotiation process, the budget was decided upon, and low and behold, even though the administration was looking at eliminating a lot of the HUD programs, we came out with an increase of five hundred thousand dollars for the Section Eight budget. Good sign. Unfortunately, it's being offset by about one point five million dollars in increased costs to the program. So it came, but unfortunately, it's not enough, but it's helping a little bit. Staff decided to be proactive. If you recall, towards the end of the twenty-seventeen year, HUD came in and announced to a lot of agencies that there were budget shortfalls going on, and agencies were designated shortfall agencies. And as a result, HUD prevented people from, agencies from pulling people off the Section Eight waiting list. Seeing that this is the very beginning of the fiscal year, and HUD's does not have much flexibility at the very beginning of a year to say you're in shortfall. We went ahead and staff was proactive, and we pulled thirty applicants off the Section Eight waiting list. They're currently going through a screening right now. And we're hoping that they lease up. We're hoping that we might be able to pull a few more people off the waiting list before HUD comes in and starts telling agencies to start slowing things down again. In addition to that, we've received three hundred thousand dollars in additional funding, and it's admin funding for the amount of portable vouchers that we operate. If you recall, for about five, six years ago, the Housing Authority was very concerned about the rate of portable vouchers coming into the community and the unfair rate that we were earning administration monies on that. So HUD responded to those concerns, not just in Glendale, that were heard not just from Glendale, but nationwide. It came up with this pot of money annually that they will do calculations for high court agencies and try and make them whole or assist them by providing additional funding that's for administration purposes.
Is this in response to our initiative through Adam Schiff?
We feel it is, yes.
It is, okay.
Yes.
Because that's exactly what we asked.
Correct. Correct.
How you define high performing agency?
Every year, we go, well, we'll get to that then. The other thing that we've done is, in looking at Section Eight program, HUD has come up, although they're not funding us new vouchers, they're coming up with new voucher programs where they're trying to target specific special need populations. So if you recall, the VASH program is for formerly homeless veterans. We have an allotment of fifteen vouchers for that particular population, Section Eight vouchers. They've issued a NOFA, and we responded to that NOFA in conjunction with the Lanterman Center and the Glendale-based Modern Support Services service provider. And they're calling it mainstream vouchers, a small allocation they're giving out to different agencies that can demonstrate the ability to meet and serve the needs of a special population that is a non-senior, developmentally disabled person and/or head of household who is coming out of an institutionalized setting. So it's a very specific program that, target population they're trying to reach. In consultation with the Lanterman Center and Modern Support Services, we felt there was an ability to service a small group of people if we were to be awarded those vouchers. So we applied for that NOFA, and we're waiting to hear from HUD whether or not they might allocate it. And then, continue to run operations where the city is designated as a high performing agency with regards to Section Eight. So annually, we are required to audit our own operations on the Section Eight program. And depending upon our results, we're designated either a high performing agency, middle performing agency, or a low performing agency. For years, we have been designated as a high performing agency. And so we strive to continue that designation.
Quick question, the additional eight hundred thousand dollars, that's sufficient funding for thirty new applicants to be funded to receive Section Eight vouchers?
No, no, not necessarily. But we think with the amount of vouchers that HUD has had us decrease, we think we have the ability to bump that back up. So it's not a direct, that five hundred thousand dollars in additional budget authorization is, does not necessarily translate to thirty applicants. That's our best estimate as to what we think it could represent, and we're taking the initiative to try and qualify now.
In other words, sort of going for it, and then at the end of the year, we're going to bill them for it, right?
Right, because at the end of the year, HUD is going to do what they're going to do. And so after a number of years of observing how they go through this process, keep in mind, HUD has, even though we've, HUD has funded every, to date, HUD has funded every agency they found to be shortfall with additional money. So it could be looked at that over time, HUD is trying to get everyone to reduce their numbers artificially to match our budget. So there's some argument to say is, well, if they're going to continue to fund us at the end of the year for whatever gap we have, should we really work too hard in lowering our numbers? Or should we still continue to try and serve people before they come in and tell us to stop? And that's what we're doing here.
We're taking a bit of a risk, but it's based on past years' experiences.
Correct, but, but it goes back to the fact that that bit of risk is offset by the fact that we have over five million dollars in administrative funding reserves that we can use to back that up.
And the new administrative funding that we've received as part of this portable vouchers initiative that will be, but that will be categorized as administrative funding, it'll go into the administrative funding part?
Correct, correct, you can't use it for new vouchers.
Obviously, we can use it for, yeah.
Yeah, but we can use it to help staff better help our clients.
Sure, but we're flexible on how we use it.
I have a question, too.
Shoot.
Go ahead.
So if we give more vouchers, and then what will happen? You said HUD will pay for the shortfall, right?
So far, HUD has paid for the shortfall at the end of every year that they've declared us to be short, yes.
So why we are not giving more vouchers, and if we are short, they're going to pay? So what, what is it that we are not?
There's a delicate balance as to how far everyone is comfortable in going. If HUD, there's a fear that if, if, if we were to just pull people off the list without any regard to what the potential impacts could be, HUD might turn around and say, no, you willfully tried to circumvent the process. So you need to really balance that.
Is that understood, that clear?
It's kind of, you know, we never tried. So we have to try to go over the board so to see how we can manage it.
How will we fund it?
Well, yeah.
How will we fund it? If, let's say we take off five hundred people off the waiting list and fund everyone's vouchers for the next year. And we're stuck with a two hundred million dollar bill, how do we fund it when HUD says go pound sand?
Right, right. They'll say dip into your reserves, and if the reserves aren't enough, they'll say, well, what about your local agency ponying up the rest?
Now, my point was not to pull five hundred people, I mean, it used to be above the limit. A little bit above the limit, rather, like from a year ago, we could issue vouchers, but we didn't do it because we want to be in safe side or conservative, to be conservative. So if we go like ten vouchers or twenty more, so.
That's what we're doing.
As I said, this is just the initial pull. We think we're going to try and be able to pull more, but at the same time, there's only so many clients we can handle in qualifying as well. I can pull a hundred, and they'll just sit there, and when the next housing advisor is able to assist them, it might be six months down the road. And then we do everyone a disservice. So we try and pull them in increments. If we feel that these thirty applicants we pull, a majority of them qualify, they're issued vouchers, and they're able to lease up a unit within the six-month mandated timeframe, then we'll look and say, okay, there's some success there, let's pull some more vouchers and see what that number could be.
There is a certain budget that you know at the beginning of the year.
Right.
That the HUD has committed to, correct?
Correct.
Does that budget cover the extra thirty vouchers? I know what the answer is, I just wanted you to restate it again.
It, it probably won't cover the extra thirty, but that extra thirty is going to be offset to those people, by those people that are exiting the program, to the various ways that they do that.
Right.
So rather, rather than us descend every year, but decrease by two hundred vouchers, this might be able to mitigate that, and it's only a hundred vouchers. And we're trying to be able to pull people off and still deal with this very delicate budget situation.
On the average, for the last five years, how much over that budget have we gone with HUD having reimbursed?
Well, that's not an easy question to answer, because the better question is, how many times has HUD not given us a sufficient budget? And I would say every year.
No, I know that, I mean, it's kind of a subjective category, insufficient budget from our perspective.
Right.
But, and they're never going to give us a sufficient budget.
Exactly.
But last year, we had an X number that was allocated to us, but we ended up spending X plus something, right?
Yes.
That's what I'm trying to get at.
I think at the end of the fiscal, I think at the end of the twenty-seventeen year, HUD reimbursed us about almost two million dollars of money that was considered to be shortfall. And that was after we took actions that decreased that over time.
Right, so my point is, last year, we did take the risk of two million dollars over what HUD had committed to. So we went over two million dollars hoping that they would actually reimburse us, and they did.
And in those meetings, HUD brings up, hey, you've got a healthy reserve. And we said, yeah, exactly, it's a healthy reserve because we haven't touched it.
Right.
And we will touch it after you commit to helping us. If you're helping other agencies, you have the ability to help us as well.
And we're still on, even with the completion of these thirty applicants, assuming they, you know, we take them off the list, and they're successfully taken off, we'll, we'll still be at the five point, sort of the maximum point?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Category, right?
I'd probably have to, I think the last time I checked, it might have been another, maybe around two hundred people at five points.
Two hundred?
Yeah.
And that number keeps growing because folks are.
Yeah, and the numbers keep, exactly, the numbers keep changing. Someone with three points might now update their points, and they're at five, so. But we are, I could say.
All the four pointers are constantly asking, well, you told us three years ago that there were only two hundred people left.
Right.
With five points, what happened? And they, this is what happens, people just keep upgrading to five points, downgrading, I mean, it depends on how you look at it.
So as you can see, this strategy, just the discussion we've had right now, it's, it's a difficult, given the circumstances, it's a difficult strategy to maintain and develop. We think, though, that we've been doing pretty well in responding to the Housing Authority's concerns with trying to advance in the different areas that we can, applying for additional vouchers, even though there might be a special need population. We're taking that chance, getting additional money when we can under the portable voucher program, pulling people off the waiting list, even though it's a small number, it is going to assist people. And we'll look at pulling more. And, and doing all that while we continue to be a high performing agency, because that still gives us some benefits and some clout with HUD if and when issues do pop up in the future.
How did the reserve come about?
Uh, it's really started to.
How did we generate the reserve?
Yeah, it really started to build when those portable vouchers started to come in, I'd have to say. Staff was able to get, and this is prior to me, previous administrations, staff was able to be very efficient in the managing of those portable vouchers and the costs. And every year, we were able to sock away a little bit more and more money at the end of the year into our admin reserves.
Meaning that we expended less money on the portables than we actually ended up recovering?
Correct.
And we just added that on, is that an ongoing process, or?
Yes.
It is.
Every, lately, the amount of money we've been able to put in the reserves is about two hundred thousand dollars, I think, was the last year, which is pretty good, versus agencies that have deficits.
Right.
Is that strictly for admin?
Strictly for admin. Cannot use it for anything else. Oh, yeah, yeah, it's strictly used for admin, and it would be used for budget shortfalls, government shutdowns, things like that, we'd use it to support that.
And you've applied for this NOFA for mainstream vouchers? Do we have many applicants that would be considered?
We identified a number between fifteen and twenty-five.
Really?
Yeah. Working with the regional Lanterman Regional Center and Modern Support Services. And we thought it would be a good place to start, because it's a very case-intensive population to serve. If, if the homeless veterans VASH program is a difficult population, this is even more so of a population. And so you can't bite off more than you can chew, and that's why we all thought collectively, somewhere between fifteen and twenty-five vouchers might be manageable.
When you say difficult, is that because?
Developmentally disabled person, coming out of an institutional setting. Meaning they're going to need support services, most likely, they're not, they don't have the ability to get around town independently. Someone will have to be driving them around, someone will have to be advocating for them with landlords, because they're going to be trying to lease up these market rate units and apartments, just like everybody else. And so, and then, once they're there, helping them transition from that institutional setting to living independently with a, with a community around you.
So placement is a problem, I mean, is it?
Placement's a challenge.
Challenge.
And then allowing them to live, continuing to live independently over time in their unit is a challenge. And that's where we look for the Lanterman Regional Center and agencies like Modern Support Services to provide that service. Rather than us doing that case management, we don't have the ability, they do that component. That's kind of the way the NOFA is designed, to have agencies, housing authorities, work with agencies that provide services already to that population.
Thank you.
And we'll see where it goes.
When the funding comes down from the HUD, does the admin funding and the actual voucher funding come separately, or is it one batch of money?
In the regular voucher program?
Yeah.
Separately.
Separate.
Separately, because HUD will give you your admin funding based upon the number of vouchers you have active.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Strategy one point three was identifying revenue for affordable housing. We, and so as, as we had said earlier, we are looking at a potential development impact fee for affordable housing. We are looking at an in-lu fee for affordable housing. Those are two locally generated and controlled avenues possible for affordable housing revenue generation. There's also the two state measures we had mentioned before, SB two and SB three. SB two, this is the first year of it in place. They have some specific requirements for year one. Year one's really going to local governments for updating their zoning and planning documents. It's not really going to households, households, it's trying to get agencies to bring up to speed their housing elements. And then another portion of money is going to homeless services in that first year. So planning staff and community services and park staff are on the watch for these NOFAs for year one funding. And then year two funding is where we hope to see programs that we could take advantage of in terms of, in the housing division, and hopefully, production, so we'll keep an eye out for that. And as I indicated before, coming on the November ballot is this SB three, which is a four billion dollar general obligation bond for affordable housing purposes. And that comes with some caveats in terms of how it will be spent. There's one billion that's already set aside for veterans home loan programs, balance being allocated across an array of programs, farm worker housing, down payment, down payment and mortgage assistance program, some TOD type of projects. So we'll see in terms of what it is that the state releases, in terms of regulations, and how they might be applicable to here in Glendale. But we continue to look at this strategy of one point three of revenue. And then, this is why we're here today, providing you this report, to get some feedback, and specifically under this category, one point four legislative lobbying. And this is probably the one most intensive effort strategy to maintain, both for staff and the Council and the Housing Authority. It's, it's a long-term, ongoing strategy. And what we thought is, is that rather than simply, in the direction we've received, is rather than simply responding to proposed legislation that's been out there. If you remember, twenty-seventeen was one of the most active years for proposed housing law that was being done, and that was the state's reaction to the affordable housing crisis. And there were some interesting ideas, there were some plainly bad ideas that they had come up, and the city took positions on them. The direction was, when appropriate, whether or not there was anything that we can propose to work its way up, rather to respond to bills that are working their way down. And so that's what we're bringing before you today. Twenty-eighteen, just like twenty-seventeen, there's a whole new host of different housing bills working its way. There's, it's detailed in the report, there's the slides here showing them, I won't get into too much detail. For the most part, the leaked position on them has been to either oppose most of them, which we agree with on that, and to watch some of the others as they morph into, over time. And so we'll continue to take a look at those and act appropriately as they work their way up. But in terms of being able to formulate some possible strategies for consideration, this is what we wanted to bring before you. And if you felt that there was some merit to the concepts, not the specifics, because those specifics, keep in mind, are going to change as they, if they work their way up through the state process. Different people with some vested interest in there will, will change the proposals, and some for the good, some for the bad. But whether or not the concepts themselves are worthy enough to then present to the state legislators for possible inclusion as a bill. One of the first questions that are asked with these ideas is, what does your local council feel about it? Do they support it this way or that way? And that's why we're bringing these ideas, and there are four ideas to bring, bring before you. One is to whether or not there's a desire to create a, what we're calling a landlord property tax rebate or reduction for Section Eight participation. And this is providing, this idea provides a property tax rebate or reduction to multifamily property owners who during the curse, the course of a full year, rent a unit to a Section Eight applicant. And what we're trying to do is incentivize the Section Eight program. We are trying to help bridge the gap between Section Eight rents and what the market rents are. We are not level with the market rent. So our tenants are having some difficulty in going out there and leasing up the units. They're taking longer to lease their units than what we've had in the past. And that's why we increased our payment standards about six months ago, if you recall, we came before you and made. If you recall, we came before you and made that notification. That's one of the reasons why our costs this year are going up by an estimated almost $2 million. A lot of that has to do with the fact that we're increasing, we increased our payment standards. The idea is to create possibly a pilot program, limited in some form, maybe make it a voluntary opt-in program for some agencies that they thought that would have value to it. It would, because it is a property tax measure, it would require a board of equalization to weigh in on something like that. Some of the thoughts we've had about this is that, there are some similar programs that are out there that are trying to incentivize certain specific actions that the state would like to see. One example is about five years ago, the state passed a law where they're trying to encourage community gardens. So, what they did is, they provided a property tax rebate for land, for property owners who had vacant property that would be considered blighted, and they were giving them a rebate if they would commit to have that vacant lot serve as a community garden for five years. And we thought, okay, if there's a, if there was a desire to see community gardens, so much so that a property tax rebate or reduction program was established, why not something for Section 8, and helping them identify units?
So, so is that, that law is still on the books about the community garden?
Yes.
There's one on Kenneth Road right now.
I'm not sure if, yeah, I'm not sure if the community gardens in Glendale are a part of that program. We do know that regionally, City of Long Beach had a few parcels participate. There are certain criteria that has to be. The properties would have to have been considered blighted, the cities would have to agree to participate in that. I don't think those Glendale projects participated under this law. I don't think they did.
I was driving along Kenneth this weekend, and there's a huge empty lot in front of one of the houses.
Mm-hmm.
And this weekend, when I drove by, they had put in boxes-
Oh.
-like a community garden.
No. If that just started, they would have had to have come to the agencies, local agencies, for part of that approval process.
Like a permit for that?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and just approval to participate in this state program. So, it's probably just a little more organic of a program, and-
Oh, all right, okay.
I, I thought you were referencing the three community gardens we have in place already.
No, 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 no. This was in someone's property, private property.
Okay. So, this is just one idea we thought we'd propose, and, and see if there might be a desire to try and see if it can go further. The second idea was with regards to rent increase noticing. As we talked about earlier, the right to lease ordinance was an attempt to provide tenants some more stability in knowing what their rent is and when their increases would come along. Seeing that that's really not a viable option right now, that it's been tabled, we then began to think about whether or not there was a way to work with the existing law, and maybe modifying it to provide more time. Right now, that law says that if there's a rent increase of 10% or less, it requires, simply requires the landlord to provide a tenant 30-day notice. If it's more than 10%, it's a 60-day notice, nothing more. So, we thought whether or not, we've gotten to the point where both the state would be willing to propose something, and whether or not the landlord and multifamily owners would be agreeable to something where they modify it, where, and, and just this, this example we have is what we're calling a 30-90-120-day notice. Anything 10% or more in terms of rent increase, the standard 30-day notice. Anything between 11% and 15% of an increase requires a 90-day notice. Did I say that correctly? 10% or less, 30-day notice. 11% to 15% 90-day notice. And anytime a landlord's proposing a rent increase above 15%, 120-day notice. Just something that we think might help if there's that desire at the state level to try and move it. Third idea is whether or not we could repurpose outstanding redevelopment subordinate taxable tax allocation bond for affordable housing. So, when, when redevelopment was eliminated in 2011, Phil? 2011, there were a number of agencies that had these bonds in place, but were prevented from being able to use them. And, and if I misspeak, I'm gonna ask Mr. Lantzman to jump in and chime in on, on, on anything. In Glendale's situation, we've got about $24 to $27 million in redevelopment bonds that the state has argued you cannot use because redevelopment was eliminated. Your purpose for this bond was redevelopment activities. And the city has been arguing with them on that, and has been trying to take it further. We're in litigation, if I'm not mistaken, as well. We are wondering now whether or not there's an ability and there's a desire to repurpose those bonds if we promise to commit it to affordable housing purposes. So, the state has been steadfast in saying, no for redevelopment purposes. And we said, okay, well, if you're so concerned about affordable housing, will you release them if we commit it to affordable housing purposes? And see what that desire might be. There are a limited number of agencies that have these bonds. We are still trying to figure out the exact number and the value of those bonds. And so, this idea appears on the surface to be probably one that might be the easiest to try and move forward if there are supporters at the state level, because the impact and the money is already out there and existing, and it's just simply repurposing it. And then, finally, there's this idea as to whether or not we might be able to convince the federal's government to modify elements of the tax code, and it's in regards to capital gains tax relief, if it goes towards affordable housing land sales. Right now, if a business owner of land were to sell property, they'd be subject to a 10-31 exchange. If they wanted to avoid capital gains, they are required to reinvest their money from that sale within a specific timeframe and some set criteria into a replacement property. And that's how you can avoid capital gains. When redevelopment was around, and in the event that someone was being condemned out, it was an involuntary land sale. And so, the federal government said, okay, well, they weren't planning to sell their property, they were subject to eminent domain, they have a longer period of time to identify replacement property, to reinvest their proceeds in. And that's a two-to-three-year versus a 45-to-100, 180-day reinvestment. So, we were wondering whether or not there might be some interest at the federal level if a landowner was to sell their property for affordable housing purposes, either to a nonprofit or a local housing authority. Could there be the possibility to offer them the 10-33 exchange, more flexibility to reinvest? Would that be enough to, for a seller to say, in this hot market, I could get more money selling directly to a market rate person, but I will have this headache of reinvesting my money if I want to try and avoid capital gains. But if I sell to a housing authority or a nonprofit for affordable housing purposes, I'll have two to three years, some more flexibility, whether that might be enough to convince someone to consider us before just listing it on the market. And then, that is that one. So, that's really it. It's the update on the other strategies, and it's asking for whether or not there's an interest or direction on any one of the four legislative lobbying strategies that we think we could start to run up to the state and see what happens.
So, you're looking for direction from us?
Correct. If there any, if there's any particular idea that appeals to you, and we would then start the next step of working with our state lobbyist, identifying a sponsor for the bill at the state level, or sponsors, identifying those groups that would be in favor of something like that, those that would be opposed, and then allowing legislators to look at it and evaluate, and get back to us whether or not they're interested.
Sure. Councilman Najarian?
I have a question with regard to the rent increase noticing. Do we have the authority to make a local ordinance that would?
No. You do not preempt it.
Not at all. But we have our just cause, which is a local, a local statute.
Yes, Councilmember Najarian, we do-
Is there any overlap or any weight?
Well, that, not exactly, because that's more of a noticing concept, as opposed to a impingement on the ability of a landlord and a tenant to have a arms-length transaction, which is preempted, so there are state regulations. We could look into it further and find out what other agencies are doing, but at this point in time, my understanding is, we're, we're preempted entirely in that area.
And that was part of the work that was done in 2016, and part of 2017, was looking at what leeway we had. And it was determined by the city attorney's office that there's really not much you can do more than what the state is already offering. 30 and 60-day notices, that's it.
You know, I-
So, the solution for that would be back at the state level.
Right. I think it's a good idea. However, I don't think it was supported by the tenant advocacy groups when we were adjusting the right to lease ordinance and discussing things like that, which would stabilize their rental amounts. So, I'm not sure how much effort we want to put into that, if it's not, you know, it's not something that's desired by, by that group, and probably opposed by landlords anyway, so.
Yeah.
That's my thought on that. The other items, I think, are, make, make good sense to, to pursue, and see if there's anything that catches the eye of either our federal or state legislators to take it and run with it.
I, I particularly like the third option, repurposing outstanding redevelopment funds, because that would give us funding for housing. I mean, that would be a big, and it makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
I mean, it is actually a change that makes a lot of sense, to just repurpose this funding. So, I would definitely say to pursue that one. I also am interested, I think, the federal, the capital gains, I think it might serve us well to maybe send a letter to Senator Harris, Carmella Harris, because she's, I guess, very interested in affordable housing and with the, the, the crisis that we're in. And this may be something that strikes her fancy, that she says, you know, this might be a good idea, and perhaps she can kind of start that ball rolling, suggest it to her.
Right. Senator Jenny?
I'm just wondering, so we are now voting for the five items which we have in the forum, right? The landlord, property tax rebate reduction for Section 8, then rent increase noticing, so, and the other two, is this what we are voting?
I think we're, we're, we're just giving advice-
Giving direction.
Direction to staff, what to pursue.
I think I agree with-
And they're not mutually exclusive. We can go with all four of them, we can go with none of them.
I think I'm agreeing to all four. So, I would like to vote if we can, whatever his name, legislative platform update, so maybe we vote for four ideas which are presented here.
Okay. Thank you. And my approach is also to support all four ideas, because I think all four of them are different from one another, but they supplement each other, because they help us with our cause of doing something to increase our affordable housing stock, and to facilitate transformation from, you know, just market, you know, rental properties to affordable housing. So, each one of them are different. Number one is, you know, clearly targeted towards Section 8 vouchers, and could potentially yield a lot of good results. The rent increase notice addresses the immediate need for some kind of relief for our renters, which will not be really alleviated by any of the other three. Number three is, I'm sort of mystified as to why we haven't acted on this until now, because that's money that's just sitting there, and apparently, we're shackled and unable to really maneuver unless something changes. So, that's very important. And I understand that there's a sort of a small group of cities that are in the same situation as we are, and we're, we hold a pretty big market share of what's outstanding. But, there may be enough of us out there to prompt legislative action. And, you know, we have our state legislators, we have our senator, who's, I'm sure, linked to step up and help us out. And number four, I think it's great. I mean, you know, it may be that, you know, it'll, those individuals or entities that make use of this type of an arrangement will be few, but everyone will count.
Right.
Everyone counts. So, why not advocate for something like this? You wanted to add something, Mr. Devine?
I, I just wanted to ask on the, the number one, the landlord property tax rebate. This would particularly apply to ADUs, correct? I mean, that would help in the, would it?
No, it would not.
No?
It would not, only for those units that are being occupied by Section 8 tenants.
Oh.
I guess potentially, an ADU could be-
Could be, could be.
Rent it out to a Section 8 tenant for that full year.
And then, could they receive, would that be a tax rebate? Could that?
We'd have to look, and this is part of this, the danger of getting into the specifics so early in the process, you know, it, would it be worth it giving it certificate, these certificates out, these reductions out for just one unit, versus, is there a certain bottom threshold you want to try and develop before you start doing that? And then, it's part of that process of trying to evaluate. Certainly something we'll, we'll look at.
So, I think, do you have direction from us?
I think so. I heard conference, really, on pursuing all four ideas. Some, I, I would think idea number three, the outstanding redevelopment bond, we would want to try and jump on right away.
Right.
Only because, kind of, the table for that is already set.
Right.
And, and even though it's been there for a while, we've been fighting for that. It was, it's just not, it's not that we've just sat while the state has just held on to that. We've been litigating that, we've been trying to get it released for its original purpose. Now that we see that there's no avenue for that, now we're trying to repurpose it.
And that'll be through our legislators.
Correct.
Great. Any else? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zovek, and, and I'm glad that we're thinking creatively about ways to alleviate this crisis that we're all undergoing. So, good, thank you. Next item?
We can.
Oh, we need action?
We need action.
Do we?
Yeah.
You have two motions, one for the council and one for the housing authority.
I'll move the council item.
Second?
May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Garpadian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes.
House Authority item?
Motion.
Motion or second?
I'll move it.
Second.
Authority members, Devine?[1777.52]